Wow, this meeting is in public, it is not a meeting of the public. Ford's role, as you said, goes to improve personnel and budgets, make policies, provide oversight. We're not here to manage or solve any problems, we're here to respond to the superintendent. As a board, we believe that we must educate every child, provide every child the greatest opportunity to learn, maintain the safety, security, and viability of everything, and we're emotionally and academically, these are our core values. We appreciate your attention, if you have any questions, please ask me. First thing, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, and liberating and just as a principle.
I honor Texas's pride.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one market in the business.
Let us pray. Here in the Father, the first and foremost, say thank you, God. Thank you for life, for strength, for the grace, mercy, for joy, and happiness. Most importantly, thank you for the sun. God, we ask that you will continue to lead, guide, and direct us in all truth, knowledge, and wisdom from our God. We thank you for this gathering, for this board. We thank everyone that's here today. God, we ask you to continue to protect us and watch over us and cover us as we go throughout these days. That's all. He said yourself. Jesus' name is holy. Amen.
All these prayers, Mary, everybody. Now we're doing the superintendent's board.
Summer is here, and we hope all of our students and teachers are soaking up some well-deserved rest and relaxation after an incredible school year. We wrapped up the year with a fantastic graduation ceremony for Corsicana High School on May 23rd, where nearly 500 seniors proudly walked the stage. It was a memorable evening that went off without a hitch. Huge congratulations to our principal, Darren Tidwell, and his team for organizing such a meaningful event. And of course, hats off to Class of 2025, we're so proud of you. Looking ahead, summer is packed with opportunities, and variety of camps are on the horizon, and summer workouts for most sports are kicking off. Be sure to follow our social media channels for the latest updates and details on how to get involved. And don't forget, our Fire Net for Reading program is still going strong. Kindergarten through sixth grade students can keep logging their reading minutes all summer long for a chance to win awesome prizes, including a ride on the Corsicana Fire Trip. So far, we've logged an impressive 7,598 minutes towards our 50,000 minute goal. Let's help keep that momentum going. Visit our website for more information and track your progress.
Okay, our next thing on agenda is communication. Laura and the board.
Mr. President, Hal, President of the Board, President of the United... How about it? The president of the board, I'll just talk if it is okay. So, this past school year started with a...had some issues early on. It seemed like first year, three or four, five months with calamity a week, something all week was happening, but I feel like this whole year came together really well. And we ended headbraking. Hal just mentioned graduate wage. The probably highlight for me was this event idea, didn't you see Jay shot a break in the actual downtown in Austin? Just a lot of thought about getting to attend two state events this year. It was different for our department, and it just made the whole year for me. So we'll start possibly. Maybe I'll have to go over there and... I would, yeah. Thank you for your story. I'm glad it's a large crowd tonight. So I'll start with our highlights from the year. Some of our highlights from the year. We finally completed a bunch. Talked about website launch in October over fall break. I spent the fall break working outside every day doing some sort of update. And we finally got that completed. Got a new book, and I feel like we're kind of getting into the throes of it now, where we go control in our department, not the campuses. But we feel like we've got to a point where we're going to handle the bulk of that. Let the people on campus worried about education, we'll take care of updating things for them on the website. This Hal made a couple of additions this year that we were partners with her on. Almost a DDD campaign. That has been wildly successful. You know, I know Barbara Kelly has a lot of ties to the district, but she had a post this morning where she said she was an adoptive of Sassy Mottow, and never be difficult to speak to, and break me, or something like that. But the DDD campaign is...thank you, Austin. All right, there we go. The DDD campaign's been great. And this summer, you know, this Hal has her DDD award, and we did a certificate for our student. What we really want to do is medals. We just have to give them design and order that has probably not that hard to make it hard. But we'll get back to that in October. By next year, we'll have medals to give to the DDD person. We kind of want to do it like a presidential one, where they represent their department, take their part in this environment. And then shout-outs. We could inundate with shout-outs. There has, where everyone comes out. Couple of schools are on campaigns to get everybody in their school a shout-out. But we just had, post last week, a summer shout-out, and we had some responses from that. So those have been very successful this year in terms of recognition and just having a kind of a motto that everybody can buy into, create it. We started the digital newsletter in January. That's another thing that this Hal and I talked about, which sometimes I got it on the CD, Matt. It goes out by email, conversed with everyone, but it's also available on the website. It's one of the top picks to sell on our homepage. At T's Square in February, we had seven accommodations, five goals, a silver and a bronze. Michael had three gold level photos. And I'm still upset that the photo out front of Jeri L. and T did not fit in that category at all. One of my good buddies who's in the business who supports I before me, Mr. J, who I said, I bet you go read the judges, probably still started this deal on the blog space or Facebook. But you know what? Big Jeri L. had, they were having blast. So I'm still disappointed with that, but I'll move on. One of the things I wanted to do after last year, when we had the issues with the weather, with graduation, was have some sort of static evergreen graduation page. And so graduation central became the result of that. And that page is now of everything that's important about graduation will be on that page all year long. It lives on the high school page, but it's available also in the parents and community. So that's just a best project I find that I want to do. I just find myself probably need to look at next year, go ahead and change the dates on it. Just outside of changing the dates, everything else stays the same every year, unless Bishop Tidwell makes some procedural changes. Two, the photo contest was due this year. That was a raindrop by performance. He wanted to kind of display some of the talents of some of our students and honor them in that way. And we did that in May. I wonder if it was in May 1940? We had three categories, first, second, third place finisher in every category. And we'll start to bring that back next year. And then, of course, we added Gerald Douglas, and that was big for us. I think you've already been able to see a couple of things that we put out, the talent that that Gerald Douglas probably did. He just started coming along in March, so he is kind of, he's very talented. And we're going to get him on the right path. We have guided him on what we need to do. We're really excited about having him, and he takes a lot of pressure on knocking himself, but also... Just want to give you a quick update on social media. Facebook is where our parents live. We have 13,784 followers. That's up to 1,289 last year. Our number one viewed out of the last 90 days, Jason Loles, that's the national record, at 60, almost at 69,000 viewed. Second with 38,000 was CHS Awards Day, so we came in a distant second. Instagram is where our students live, and that's 4,492 followers, majority of them of 1824. When we post something that the students don't like, I have to monitor Instagram pretty closely because they're going to run away with it if I do. Summer projects. Last year, we had a meeting. It was actually two students' meeting upstairs. He was going over the forecast, change or addition to buttons. And I took a little bit of time to talk to the elementary friends while they were up there, elementary and Collins. And we're going to mimic another district in making their webpage kind of one pager, so that nobody, again, their campus has to update every day, make it look nice, make it look fresh. Anything an elementary parent may want, they should be able to find on that first page. And so, Anna's actually been working on that in the background. The designs have already built. We haven't launched it yet, but we're going to continue to get that completed. There are a couple of tools that we want to do today. Website review, we try to do this every year. It is an enormous job. Some may say that's maybe the biggest job ever. Sorry. It's not jokes, in case. But it takes a lot. There are so many levels of that website. It's unbelievably hard to go through every piece of it. But I've asked the principals, at our last principal issue meeting, if they want to look to their side and see if there's something on those inside pages they want to change. Department head, the same thing. We're going to focus on parents and community initially, and go through it, make sure there's nothing obsolete, updated, that's how to get it updated as we can. App restoration, I actually spent a lot of time with Hal on that. Our app has gone down. And when I got the new phone in February, I lost the old one, and I can't get it back now. So they're working with us on that. Mass communication, we have some issues this year with mass communication. I don't know if it's all Skyward, if it's all Final Side, but a lot of it could be the way the team's secretary code numbers differ. Unfortunately, for Final Side, a number has to be coded as an SMS in a phone, or you give one or the other. And for example, we have a lot of issues with bus routes because of the rain that we've had the last two months. And a lot of those parents weren't getting those messages because their phone number in Sky wasn't set as an SMS number. It was phone number. So we're reviewing that, looking at that. Complete graphics for next quarter, that's already done. Michael's already taken care of it. Those are all completed for next year. Copy and the actual graphics. So we're tweaking our look a little bit this year. We kind of like to have a base look for that, so when everybody sees something, they know that that's kind of an important message. But we're tweaking it a little bit. Do alert graphics. We actually have some things to run by you. We're going to let you take it. So he's got about five that we're going to run for that. And that would be just, you know, if a campus goes into secure or hold, or baseball game gets moved, or things like that. And then also, we're going to bolster our stock library. We started that today. Jabril actually went out to all the campuses. We're doing new campus fronts. And those will be our place over from the new elementary page, and so we actually get that in the school. And in the future, Jabril again allows us to do this, focus more on promotion, addition, recruitment, retention, and all of those things. I've really talked about these things for a couple of years, but when you get in the heat of the school year, it's kind of, I'm doing just as much content creation as Michael does. So it gets hard to really stop back and look at 30,000 foot level, everything that we need to do. Again, he's going to help here. More videos, real style and traditional. We kind of want, a lot of our things that we push out to the classroom, a conference, a trip. More work in training with campus webmaster, social media administrators. That will start to trend more towards social media. We'll start taking on most of the website information to them. The DDD medals that I talked about earlier, we're looking at some AI benefits for our first school PR. Lord knows, I'm an old sports writer. Michael's an old editor, we're both old editors. We still believe in the old way, but I have used AI more than last month than ever in my entire life, which obviously hasn't been around forever. But I'm really starting to embrace and adapt it. And then we're also looking at some other series that we can do. And one we talked about was former students making a difference in our community. We're going to actively seek them to do videos on the stories, things like that. So that's it. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Coach Roger. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, Coach Roger, I'd like to update.
All right, I have to come bearing gifts. We are Corsicana. On behalf of Corsicana Athletics, our track team, Mr. Lloyd, and Coach Brazil, I present you Nicole Edel. We are Corsicana. We enjoy it for everyone in Corsicana. Congratulations.
I had shirts. Our team was natural.
I need to send you guys a picture of this. Hal signed the letter, said that she authenticated his success, that he did it. All right, so we will get started. First of all, we are Corsicana. It's our motto, and it is all of us. We represent everyone in the city of Corsicana. And our kids know that by now. We have opportunities for both of you to participate in 19 different activities. This past year, we qualified seven of those 19 activities, boys cross country, regional qualifier, boys soccer that are by district finalists, girls and boys powerlifting. We had regional qualifiers, state champions, and state qualifiers on both sides. Our golf program, regional qualifiers, baseball, regional semifinalists, boys and girls track, area finalists, regional finalists, state qualifiers, and state champions, and also actually national champions. Team tennis, anchoring tennis, district qualifier, regional qualifiers, and state qualifiers. I had an opportunity this spring to talk to all the coaches and get their book on their program, to give you the numbers, to stay with their programs. And I started with the middle school as well as the high school. We have a total of 120 males and 72 females. That's seventh grade, 148. Eighth graders, 109. Eighth grader females. 64 football players, 16 cross-country, 20 basketball players, 20 track males on the girls' side, 4, 28, 24, and 16. Eighth graders, we had nine, both male and female, cross-country runners. 26 volleyball players, 20 basketball, 21 female, 29 track participants, eighth grade, and 15. And in soccer, we had uptick in female soccer, 38, 21 soccer, that's eighth grade. As far as high school... As far as high school participation, football, we had 70 ninth grade boys, 58, 10, and 11. We only had 22 seniors. Basketball, uh, excuse me, volleyball, we had 11 ninth grade girls, 10, 10, and 11. And then 13 seniors. Basketball, 21 freshmen, males, 19 females, and 27, 10, 11 graders, 11 females. And then ninth, I mean, 12th grade, we had nine males and four senior girls. Tennis, 10, 5, and 6, 6, and 11, 10, 11, and then 7, 3, as seniors. Softball, we had nine freshman girls, 15, 10, 11, and then three seniors. Baseball, we had freshmen running out, 14 boys, 18, 10, 11 grade, and then seven seniors. Golf, we had six and five, and five and three, 10, and 11. And then we had three seniors, no senior girls in golf. Cross-country, those 18 boys and 11 girls, powerlifting. We had 48 boys and 11 girls. Yeah, I'm going to go in seasons, to give you a rundown of what transferred for our cross-country program. We had two regional qualifiers, and we had a good place in district for cross-country. Tiger football, record was 1-9, JB 2-8, freshman, proud of both guys, we were 6 and 4. We had two first team all-district players, and we had two second team all, we had eight honorable mention district selections in football. Just to pause a little bit, then get my new slide. I added in there, we had guys that just played at the camp this weekend, and they did exceptionally well. Mr. Mark Brown ran a 4-3-8 at the TCU camp, and he came out with four offers. University of North Texas, UTEP. He had Washington State, and he's actually going to TCU tomorrow. So they don't offer at camp, they offer after their mini camp. So I talked to their high school relationships coach, Coach Wade, I know him very well. We used to be together when he was at Arlington Martin. And he told me that they're probably going to offer a scholarship to TCU next year. So about 4 o'clock tomorrow, I should know something, they should have an official offer. And after the TCU offer, they're all going to come here. I talked to the... No, this is the 26th. This is the 26th record. So he has four, he's probably going to have six, seven offers going into his senior year before he even starts. And you guys know now that Texas has basketball that can pay seniors, and he will make more money than all of us. I mean, but he subbed the program, and he's done a great job by going through offseason, doing the work that we put forth for him. And also, I wanted to pause here and talk about some of the things that we've done. This spring, football-wise, we went to Washington State, they had 7-0-7. We were 2-1. We played three games, we were 2-1 in that tournament. We went to a tournament this past week in Dallas, we were 2-1 in that tournament. So there's some other trajectory in program, getting started by end, doing things right. And also, it's going to bring my spreadsheet of our NACs and test scores to let you know what we were doing and what the kids were doing in offseason, and to let you see where they started in the squad, in the bench, in the power unit, and where they are now. And once you see that, you just come to like, wow. We had kids that would bench 200, now they're benching 250 pounds. A kid that squatted 225, he's squatting over 300, 300 pounds. So our progress has gone up because they have been doing the work. Those guys have been doing the work. And moving off the volleyball program, record was 15, 23. JB, he was a 7 freshman, later 4-10. We had...we had the utility player of the district. We had one all-district player, and then two second-team auditions, and we had four honorable mention selections in volleyball. Basketball, group 10 and 20, 17 and 12, and nine and 13. We had two first-team audition selections, and one second-team audition, and one honorable mention. And I would say this, Coach, they are, they're going to different tournaments and things like that. And they're also playing summer balls and beating at I-Dub, and putting those kids out there and letting them experience success. Lady Tigers, 16 and 19, 62 and 1, the freshman group private squad, 15 and 8. We had one second-team all-district, Ms. Mathis, in basketball program for Lady Tigers. Our Lady Tigers soccer program, 12 and 7, 7, 8, 2. We had, the only other year, we had two first-team audition selections, two second-team auditions, and six honorable mention selections in our soccer program for Lady Tigers. And Tigers, they're five district finalists, 13, 7, and 3, and then JB, 6, 5, and 6. We had the district most goals, four first-team audition selections, three second-team, and four honorable mention selections. Our powerlifting program, of course, we had the state champion. We had third-place finish on the male side. We qualified five males to state, five females to state, as well as 15 to the regional championship, and 10 girls to the regional championship. Our golf program, Mr. McRae, he's a regional qualifier. We did softball, right? We did. Okay, softball, 9, 16, 2, and then we were 3, 12. We had one audition selection, two second-team audition, three honorable mention selections on softball. Baseball, again, we're regional semifinalists, 20, 7, and 1. JB Blues, 8, 9, and JB Gold, 9, and 8, across, and a freshman. We had the IFB junior of the district, Mr. Doc, he was the player of the year. Two first-team audition players, three second-team audition, and two honorable mention selections. Track and field. This year, our state qualifiers, it's something about the brothers or twins, something like that. The tennis, the brothers aren't twins, but we had the Lloyd Twins qualify for state, and the 110 had 300, and Todd qualified in the 100. And we have a national record holder, state champion, regional champion, district champion in the 110 hurdles. And for regionals in area, Corbin Longchamp, there you go, Jeri L., and Deandre Lord, they're also on the relays. How'd the Saturday go?
It was good, he placed first in one.
What did he jump?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one? I was in fourth, watching my dogs play, thank you.
Sorry, triple.
Our ladies, uh, our track program, we were third in state. And they were the regional champions as well as four by two qualified, uh, for the state championship. Four by fours, again, third place in state, they're regional champions, four by two state qualifier. And the names of the young ladies had defeated all the relay. Our Texas state district champ, regional semifinalist, Bay Blouse, for fortieth, fortieth year in a row. Overall, we're eighteen, five, and ranked the thirteenth, so fortieth year in a row. See somebody look at your smile? As long as you should. Again, state qualifiers, we had the cage brothers, saw them in the bank. They're just so excited. And we had, uh, three regional qualifiers, straight tens. They're pretty good after that. Academics, so we, we also track academics as well. And if we're gonna do a, a better job, this, uh, this coming up year, we're gonna track, uh, grades and pass fail and things like that. But we had a proud and tanky, what, one percent passing rate for all sports, all sports. Community coaches, they have great teachers and coaches and looking after those kids, making sure they, uh, doing a good job academic wise. We had numerous students who said academic off-state, um, next year we will highlight them and I'll get their names and let everybody know they have a senior as well. Uh, scholarships, we had the twins from Texas State, uh, new school, University of Texas, Beryl Brown.
Yeah.
Beryl Brown. And then, uh, they have one Western Oklahoma. Now, we're gonna do a better job next year. And we're gonna streamline the signings. We're gonna have a major signing and then we have one lady for everyone else. So you don't have to go over here, go over there and, and do that. But we want them to be highlighted as well, but we're gonna have to start from there. Um, our athletic goals, they preach participation in convention baptisms, um, I want to have a priest seminar for our parents and our students. I, I know, uh, of some coaches in, in any cities that, that do this, priest places I've, I've done that. So I, I, I do wanna do that, uh, for our, for our community and let them know what's going on. Because I had to navigate with Mark on how to handle this situation that he's, he's going into with, with NIL and all those things, you know? I had to tell him, hey, don't go in there and start asking how much am I gonna get, you know? We're not gonna do that. We're, we're gonna be educated in the process. We're gonna talk about our education, what to offer and things like that. And, uh, I had told him to have his questions prepared for them. And then what people are gonna say, they, the universities have NIL and, and that's all they do. The football or baseball program, they don't do that. That's someone else. So I said, talk to them about that, the ladies and that, so don't go in there, how much am I gonna get? That, that I can offer, but let me go to the next person. But we're gonna have seminars and things like that and more professional events, speakers. I'll say the AD conference. I was approached by a former coach, a high coach with, he wanted to actually become just for our, our kids. I thought, oh, I feel one service. But we want to improve, uh, cross sport support, teenage, uh, community service projects, things like that. We're being that, so we're gonna continue to do that and, and put our athletes out there and help them serve the community. We need schoolwork, make it a good, middle school practice field, need to make sure that's taken care of that they have a safe place to take a practice. So we need, we need to make, make sure that is, uh, up here. Have to talk to different coaches and find out what the issues were. Coach told me he had a broken ball, you know, a broken one, so we're gonna, we're gonna get that taken care of, things like that. Prepare it for the track surf, the golf, the runway pits, things like that. We're gonna host the area track meet next, next year. So it's gonna be our place. We're gonna bring in, uh, two districts, we'll, we'll combine and come here, tour together, and compete in area track meet. So if we want things to be immaculate and nice, uh, grass fields and tiger domes, make sure that's taken care of. Upgrade weights, baseball and football, we'll get some new weights out here we can repurpose, uh, both the gym and the baseball. That's, that's, that's it for wrap up. Again, oh, Tigers, we are, we're scanning, I appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Coach, appreciate you. Next one again, is a, a pro teacher or either captain? No.
Good evening. Uh, either or, good, you should have the, uh, calendar, decides to be approved every year for a T test. And that is how we evaluate our teachers. Any questions on the calendar? There's certain rules we go by, you can't, can't evaluate, first by losing school, put back in the holidays, anything like that, so. Questions?
Mr. President, number three approved, twelve point five, the nature of regular calendar.
Second. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, so, uh, my first year, uh, at the high school, and it was a very proud year for me, graduation. I, I've been in education for nineteen years, this is the first year that I really felt a pride. And I guess it's just being an alumni out here and wanting their name to be good and our kids to be good, everything that they do. So, uh, thank you for giving this opportunity, but, uh, so our, our total number was four sixty-nine. With that number of seven seniors that are still working, I think that's already down to four just in the last three days. Uh, so they're, they're, they're gonna get there, um, but we're, we're, we're holding accountable for these last few weeks to get them there. Uh, but we're sitting with, with them, we're already sitting ninety-nine percent of our graduation rate, so, uh, it's very good for those kids. But we, we don't want to leave these kids behind, uh, so we wanna make sure of that. Uh, the CCMR, that goes back to our college career and military readiness. Uh, when I took over, uh, this year, uh, coming into this school improvement, uh, I really didn't know what you were in this school for. Uh, and after kind of sitting down and talking to the regional club a little bit, uh, one of the big names was, uh, we could get our CCMR scores up along with our testing scores. Uh, the CCMR alone would help us out. Uh, Mr. Dorn brought it up twenty-something points this past year. And that was kind of my goal, come in and build off the gym and get forty percent more. We're, we're, last year they pitched a sixty-eight percent, uh, and we're up to, we're getting close to ninety. Uh, so that's, that's gonna, that's gonna be wonders for our accountability rate next year. Uh, so that's, that's the, one of the things that we focus on is, uh, to get that score up is the college bridge program, Texas College Bridge Program. It's like a remedial course that seniors can take for English and math. It basically gives them, uh, the credits where they wanna go, uh, to college. They don't have to take those remedial classes, like it's a, it's a state free course. Uh, so what we've done is we've just kind of streamlined it with our, our seniors, uh, because they have flex periods. They have the credits, so they don't come to school on certain periods. So what we've done is we just plug those into the flex periods, they do those, and then they gain their flex period right back. So they're not even there all year long, uh, it's a, it's kind of a short online course. Uh, but it helps them become, uh, college ready. Uh, TSI, that's the test that they have to take to, to become full credit at elementary school. Uh, there are different ways that they can get their CCMR points, uh, and a lot of them get it in many different ways. We're willing to get accounted for one, each kid on this one point. Uh, but seventy-three percent of our kids, uh, got, got it through TSI. Uh, and then our AP examinations, we offer AP and dual credit. Uh, you know, the, the difference on that is if you, you take dual credit and you pass the class, you're getting a high school credit and college credit just by passing that class. AP exam, uh, you, you, you gotta take AP classes and you gotta take that AP national exam in a year, uh, to get credit. So, uh, it's a lot lower of a number there, but five percent have done that. Um, I tried to get the, again, this is my first year of graduation report, and I probably waited too late on this, but I tried to get how many total hours our seniors of dual credit graduate. You know, we can only go back this spring with, with the time that we had. And just, just this spring, they graduated, they had over a thousand hours, just our seniors alone. So they, if you go back and try to do math, they probably had over thirty thousand hours total of dual credit. Uh, so that they're definitely prepared for getting a step up in the college world, so. Uh, industry-based certifications, and I have a slide, over that we'll go over, this is second, kind of breaks down those. Um, that was really big because that was a way that our non-high-end students, the kids that weren't going to college, could get their point. But now since we've introduced this Texas College Bridge, industry-based certifications aren't as prominent in that, in that, in that factor area of an area, uh, but they still, um, they still matter because they're a concentrator in our CTE and our CTE money, a lot they're gonna get. So the more that we can put them on this pathway, uh, to take those higher level CTE courses, plumbing it. So that's, it's key for our, our counselors about keeping those kids on the, on the right path and not moving them around from lower level classes that they go all the way through. And twenty-seven percent of those, uh, got actual certifications that they can take into the workplace and the work field. Um, and then we had one percent of the kids, uh, that, uh, got their point, uh, off of being in special ed, uh, within a basic degree plan, and what, just for basic level.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
On the, um, the Texas College Bridge program, that class, is that something they would do in the end? They say don't pass the English TSI, they could take that class, that would then let them go ahead and-
Yes, so-
Get into, say, College Alabot or whatever?
Yes.
Instead of taking the remedial class?
Correct, correct. And what, what, the way we go about that, um, the way that I pushed that out this year was, um, I had our counselors go, uh, and, and Amy Johnson go back and look at, uh, when we started our, their senior year, every kid that did not have a point, uh, those were our target kids. Even if they were on course to get that IBC, can't really wait till the end of the year for them to get that certification. So we put all those kids that did not have a point for us after their junior year finished, uh, we put those in those, in those classes. Uh, and just ran them through regardless of what their plan was. Uh, but yes, it, it, it helps them just go straight into a college, you know, college math class. The counselors are credited them because you take those remedial classes in college and that doesn't count as accredited dollars.
I have a question about that as well. Uh, so is it a semester-long class?
Not even that.
Okay.
Uh, it's a, it's a self-paced course, just like our executive credit recovery courses are. Uh, and so they get, some of them get done with it pretty fast, uh, and then some of them drag it out till the last all year. Uh, but the, the motivation we have behind that is we tie it into a flex period. So as soon as they're done, they get that period back for their, for their availability. But, um, the program doesn't, we, even when I was a builder, I, I tried to ask the program to lock it during school hours for those kids to work on it twenty-four seven, uh, so that helps them get done with it earlier. Uh, but if we can ever lock it to school time, it might last my semester, which would really be the intention of them getting more out of it. But right now, it's, it's kind of self-paced with how fast it can do.
Can they also take it in the summer or is it just during the school?
Uh, we have to, we have to like set them up through that. I mean, they could, we set them up through that, but we, that's just something else for somebody to kind of work on in the summer. I don't know how, how much they would do in the summer, but if a student came up to us, really wanted to like get ahead and do that, we probably could. All right, so our industry-based certifications, um, these are actual certifications, not a percent. These are certifications, um, automotive was sixty, and a lot of these, um, are kind of, I didn't do a breakdown of each, each, uh, certification, but there's caps in all these classes. Um, you know, if we only have twelve welders in a, in a shop, we can only have so many kids in there at a time. Uh, we only have so many teachers, so many classes, so there's, there's different caps. So you take animal science, only having seventeen, um, their, their percentage of kids getting that certification might be ninety-seven percent because they might be, that might be close to their cap. I don't have that on the top of my head, but, so don't read into those numbers too much. Uh, but automotive had sixty, um, culinary arts helped them come in thirty-eight. Uh, healthcare, we had two new healthcare teachers this year, which is kind of always worrisome. They don't really have anybody to go off of, uh, but, uh, JB did a really good job of helping them feel comfortable in our, and we did as well, trying to, uh, kind of constantly getting a feedback, I think they even went to a few of their schools to get some, watch some other healthcare, uh, teachers work. Uh, but they love what they do and they're happy to be here, so we're, we're happy. Um, law enforcement, twenty-nine. Um, speaking of law enforcement, uh, next year we should have some fire academy students on there. So that should be our first, uh, class certification wise, uh, next year. Uh, welding and ag tech, uh, twenty-seven. Uh, teaching and training, uh, seventeen, uh, animal science seventeen, digital communications four. Trying to get ready to smart up the day. And then all certifications of two twenty-six, which, which is a really good number. Uh, and we're adding, uh, real estate, uh, this next year as well, uh, so we're, we're, every year we're trying to add to that as well. And just one more thing to coach it on that I, I just want, not too often do we get graduated for state champions. Um, so that was, that was really cool. Uh, yeah. Uh-
Coach's mom.
Oh, okay.
How old are you talking about?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. But, uh, we actually had three state champions in culinary, but one of them was a senior. So we graduated three state champions, so that was, that's really cool to, to have in a class. Um, I don't know that, I don't know that I graduated to the stage yet, but we were close to a few minutes. Uh, so yeah, so I, I believe it was a very successful first year and I appreciate, uh, your time and your support and giving me the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Aaron. Texas, senior general? You have a great question.
I'm doing the way for the senior general.
We have motion and second approval. Senior general, then all in favor? Uh, vote. Uh, we will now turn to the closed section, my desk, every code, section five five one, page one.